Good evening. Today is July 9th, 2025. And this is the Planning and Zoning Commission of Carroll County, Maryland. Can we have a call to order, please?
Good evening, everyone.
Evening.
Ms. Kirkner?
Here.
Mr. Kane?
Here.
Mr. Huff?
Here.
Mr. Robertson?
Here.
Mr. Swayson?
Here.
Mr. Lester?
Here.
Mr. Smith? Mr. Gordon?
Here.
Secretary Daley?
Here.
Madam Chair, please let the record reflect, we have seven on the murs or present, and we do have a forum.
Okay, thank you. Let's stand for the pledge, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, and universal, liberty, and justice for all. Has everybody reviewed the agenda?
Yep.
Okay. I will take it, excuse me.
I think the motion that we approve the agenda for the July 9th, 2025 meeting.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And what about the minutes? Has everybody had a chance to review them?
Did.
Okay.
I have no revisions or changes to it. And having said so, unless anybody objects, I would move that we approve the minutes from May 20th, 2025 as the minute.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Moving right along, administrative report, Secretary Daley.
Thank you. I only have one item. And that is to let you all know that our beloved Mary Lane is retiring. She will be, her last day will be July 24th. So she will be here at your next day meeting. And then she'll be riding off into the sunset. So anyway, I just wanted to give you that information so you have plenty of time to say goodbye to her as you wish.
Well, I heard the news, but I didn't believe it. So now I'm believing.
Official.
Best wishes to you. We will certainly miss you.
Congratulations.
Mary, how long have you just, how long have you been on staff here?
Ten years.
Just ten? Okay. Thank you. Thank you for everything.
It feels like twenty-two, one, two. Remember, Chris is behind you.
Yeah, I'm sure. I'm sure we all had, had impact, me more so than anybody, for you retiring. So thank you. We appreciate it.
No, not you, Pete.
Just to follow that up, I also wanted to let you know that Claire Stewart, who has been here before you a number of times, will be taking Mary's place as the Bureau Chief for Comprehensive Planning. So we'll be sure to, you know, see if she can join us at the next meeting. And we can just kind of make that official announcement then as well.
Good. Yes. She will do a great job.
Yes.
Thank you. Item seven, City of Westminster Annexation Number 87, 1012 Baltimore Boulevard.
Good evening. Javier Toro, Comprehensive Planner. Thank you for your time. I hope everybody has had a great day. I am presenting today Annexation 87 from the City of Westminster, property 1012 Baltimore Boulevard. This request for annexation was received on March 13, May 13th, 2025. I included something different from other presentations because I would like for you to have a street view of the property that is going to be annexed. This is the old RE/MAX building. The city confirmed the owner is pretty much going to repurpose the building for an adult daycare facility. It is right next to 140. Here, let me get my information. In this case, as I mentioned, the facility is going to be repurposed as a daycare facility. The property is located in the 7th Election District and 3rd Commission District. The total area to be annexed is 1.2 acres. It is located tax map number 46. The annexation area, it is located within the City of Westminster Grove area and as per the 2009 Comprehensive Plan. And it is contagious to the corporate limits of the City of Westminster, as you can see on the maps on the screen. In this case, as I mentioned previously, it is 1.2 acres that the City of Westminster is looking to annex. Currently zoning for Cal County is under C2 Commercial. City of Westminster is committed to transfer the property or categorize the, or zone the property on their B category or business zone. This property does not require a waiver. Designated land use, commercial medium intensity district, as per the City of Westminster 2009 Comprehensive Plan. Currently, the property, let me get my information here, as per the 2003 Cal County Water and Sewer Master Plan, this property is under the W1 category, existing water service, and S1 existing sewer service area, though currently the property is not served by public water or sewer. Following the annexation, the property will be connected to the City of Westminster Public Sewage System. The property has an onsite well, which the Cal County Health Department has allowed to be used for the proposed adult care facility as it meets and the demands for such facility. And here you can see on the maps. Take into consideration, the planning staff, we are recommending that the city give public notice, posting the property prior to the date of the public hearing and notifying all adjoining property owners. From your behalf, planning staff finds that the proposed zoning of the annexation area is consistent with the land use and density envisioned for the area in the City of Westminster 2009 Comprehensive Plan and compatible with the surrounding areas and properties. Staff also finds that the proposed annexation will not overburden public facilities or municipal services. Based on these findings, staff recommends that Planning and Zoning Commission convey their support for the annexation to the Board of County Commissioners. The next step, we'll be presenting tomorrow, July 10th, 2025. Any questions you might have?
I think it's needed. There is, of course, the adult daycare center, but I'm sure that it's needed. But I recall there was a pretty extensive fire there. Are they going to tear down that building or?
I don't have that information, but the city did confirm that the owners are going to pretty much repurpose the building. I asked, what are your plans? Are you going to demolish the whole thing? And they pretty much replied, no, they're going to repurpose. I imagine they're going to do some modifications. I cannot confirm that.
And it's not our purview, but it.
So, yeah, I remember that fire. That was just, what, five years ago or so?
It's, yeah, I think it's been pretty vacant since.
So adult daycare, define that for me. Is that like a senior, an extension for a senior center? Or it's not overnight or beds or anything like that or?
I don't have that, that specific qualification or detailed description of what is an adult daycare, but I'd be more than glad to get it for you.
I'm just curious because I never heard that, I've heard that term, but you know, I don't know. You know, we had daycare center down off of Georgetown.
Child daycare.
Child daycare. We all know what that is, but adult daycare, I don't know.
Ms. Mary Lane is going to assist.
I'm not sure about the Westminster definition, but the county definition for daycare center includes adult daycare. So I think it probably is the same with the city. It's, it's what you would think of as a child daycare center where people are there during.
No overnight.
They would not stay overnight.
No overnight.
Yeah. I think the ones I've seen are a little more extensive than like the county daycare. I think it's, they have a little more staff that can deal with people that are a little more, not quite as functional. So we, we need to move it on to the commissioners. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah, so there's no formal action that you need to take, but because this will be presented to the Board of County Commissioners, we typically are just looking for some indication from the Planning Commission that you support the annexation. Even the Board of County Commissioners, because there is no zoning waiver involved, what they're being asked to do is send a letter to the city, just kind of expressing their, their comments on it if they have any. So, so it's not really like we're taking formal action on it. But just to communicate that you've looked at it, it is in keeping with, with our master plan and, and what we would anticipate seeing in terms of the annexation process.
What you said.
You know, we, there's no conditions for us to consider, but I, you know, I would have questions about if it's adult daycare. I'm sure the building has to be retrofitted for fire. You know, the water is currently well-inseptic and the hookup to the Westminster Water and Sewers in the future. They should, you know, as long as those conditions, I think, are in the works or part of the plan, I'm okay with it.
Well, so this is only an annexation. So site plan types of issues related to the building, that sort of thing, would be a separate, that would be something that would be handled by the city once that property is annexed and ready to develop. In the course of looking at the annexation proposal, we did look at things like water and sewer service. And that's where I think Javier had touched on the finding that there wouldn't be a burden placed on the water or sewer services or any other services due to the annexation.
So Westminster will, under their own, their planning and zoning and their water, sewer, whatever, usage of the property, they'll, they'll meet those conditions.
Yeah, and it's in the existing, even though it doesn't currently have water or sewer, public water or sewer service, it's in the existing water and sewer service categories. So it's ready to be served.
Makes sense.
You're looking for a motion?
Yeah, take a stab.
Is that what you're doing?
Do we need a motion?
Yeah, I mean, so we have some suggested language in terms of conveying your support for the annexation to the Board of County Commissioners, if that's what you would like to do.
Go ahead, Peter. Go ahead. I move we approve the annexation number 87, located at 1012 Baltimore Boulevard, to the City of Westminster, as presented by county staff.
We're going to send it to the.
Yeah, yeah.
Right, we support it.
We support it. To the Board of County Commissioners.
Okay. Is that good?
One second.
All right. We don't need a voice?
I'd do a voice vote on this one, just in case.
Just say, all in favor?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, there you go.
Mr. Kane?
Yes.
Mr. Lester?
Yes.
Mr. Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Smith? Mr. Swayson?
Yes.
Mr. Gordon?
abstain.
Madam Chair, please let the record reflect, we have six ayes and one abstain.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
So I missed public comment, but looking out, I see no public. So I did not do that. Okay. Item eight, Employment Campus. Text amendment and mitts.
Good evening.
Good evening.
We were here several weeks ago with the Deputy Director and the Director of Economic Development to talk to you a little bit about a proposal to possibly amend the Employment Campus District. So today we're prepared to talk a little bit more in detail. What you've been given is a copy of this PowerPoint presentation, as well as the three-page section of the code that is the Employment Campus District. And we will run through that, and then we have a few possible recommendations, suggestions for amending the code. The plan would be if we could talk through that, we could bring back a possible amendment at next week's meeting. And we will have Paige and Denise here to talk more about it at that time again. So again, as a reminder, the Board of County Commissioners requested that you reexamine this zoning district, but particularly two things, the development review processes and the uses allowed within the district. But you should maintain the purpose of the district as envisioned in the master plan and stated in the zoning code. And that's the, the beginning of what you have in front of you. The focus should be on incorporating more flexibility into the process and removing regulatory hurdles from the approval. So I won't read all of this, but the next five or six slides are actually just copied from the code, but just so that they're on the screen. So this is the purpose and intent, this is not to be reconsidered, but it's important as you move through this to remember this is the purpose and intent of this district. It's to provide for and foster comprehensively planned employment centers in campus-like settings to attract employers of highly skilled workers and primarily hire jobs. And then it includes, it lists some of the uses. In this district, the integration of trails, sidewalks, communal plazas, and shared amenities is encouraged. So there's a number of objectives for this. Facilitating well-planned development with higher standards of development than typically found. Providing for a development that will incorporate natural features of the land. Maintain a harmonious relationship between the buildings and sites. Providing development patterns that recognize the character of the established surrounding neighborhoods. Providing for interaction and integration among the uses, there are ten altogether. Ensure that the limited number of permitted and accessory uses that are residential, retail service, and restaurant within the district serve the employment campus. That's why they are limited. Encourage green spaces, walking trails, and other recreational amenities. Serve as an economic development tool to increase the county's commercial and industrial tax base. Encourage development of buildings that can be easily adapted to a range of tenants. And last, to provide a flexible employment district. So again, when this was written, those were the purposes. And that's what, even if we make some changes to uses allowed and process, that's what we would want to keep in mind. So the first thing that we would need to consider is unlike other types of developments, this district requires a development plan. And it's something that, again, you don't see with other types of developments. This is before site plan or concept plan. This is in the very beginning when it's first envisioned. And this was one of the things that was brought to us as being particularly a problem in seeing the realization of this district. So the development plan, which again occurs very early in the process, is of the entire campus. It can't be of any of the specific individual parcels or lots. And it has to show such items as size of the project, location and approximate shape of buildings, road ingress and egress patterns, parking areas, storm drainage, water and sewer facilities, and such other information as necessary to give consideration to if it's meeting the purpose of the districts. Everything about that isn't a problem, but what was pointed out to us in particular was to be able to show approximate size and locations of buildings when a developer doesn't even know what might be going in there. So again, with the development plan, it, A would be it has to show that it will not cause points of traffic congestion on existing or planned roads. I don't think we're looking to change that. That's a reasonable thing. And that it provides for a development consisting of one or more groups of establishments in buildings of integrated and harmonious design. Again, that might be too much to expect at that early stage. It also includes parking requirements, a prohibition on outdoor storage, a comprehensive signage plan, landscaping that is different than is currently required in our landscape manual. Architecture, the building architectural renderings or plans shall be submitted at the time of this review. Again, possibly before you even know what the uses would be. And that would be to assure that they are, the buildings are consistent with the purposes and intent of the district. And then solar energy facilities, that was an addition that was made to allow this type of use in the employment campus. So the First Amendment for consideration is, the question is, should the requirement for a development plan of the whole campus prior to site plan review be removed in its, well, almost in its entirety, and deferred to site plan review, which is what you're used to seeing, possibly for the individual lots? But what would be important is language adding that when that happens, the developer would have to submit a written and/or graphic explanation as to how the development meets the purposes and intent of the employment campus as articulated in the code. And again, this is. And again, this is kind of what we just talked, or what I just talked about. It would have to show how it has higher standards of development, how it incorporates natural features and protects the environment, how it maintains a harmonious relationship between the sites, recognizes the character of the surrounding area, provides for interaction, encourages green space and walking trails, and how it serves as an economic tool to increase the tax base. How they would do that would be up to them. And then it would be up to you to decide if they had made their case. But the difference here would be when you got those site plan reviews, it may not be for the entire campus as was originally envisioned. You might be getting it for just certain lots and parcels. And again, we've talked to Laura Mathias about this. It would be a different kind of challenge for them to prove it on a lot-by-lot basis. But it, again, it would be up to them. They're in the employment campus district. This is what they would have to show you. And you would have to determine if they were doing it or add other conditions on them. But the difference, the two biggest differences would be is you wouldn't be seeing it comprehensively as early in the process. You might be seeing it piecemeal.
And Mary, can we talk about this for a second? So when someone like St. John's comes forward with the project that they're proposing for the Beatty property, they've laid out a plan for the entire, a concept for the entire property. How is that different? But well, I guess my, I guess where I'm headed is we've seen somebody do it for a large project and, you know, it's taken a while. But, and, and I know it's expensive. I've done this. And I guess my concern would be that someone would come in and cherry pick the employment campus and leave us with, you know, the parcel that has the most rock. Or they, they took all the borrow from one place and they put it on another. And now we've got a big hole in the back that we can't fill because they took all the borrow that we had on the entire. And so it's not planned, if it's not planned out in the beginning, how do we make sure that we're not left with something that's kind of unusable for the next guy or the next person? But how does that work?
That, I mean, that would be the challenge in this because you wouldn't be looking at it comprehensively. It's my understanding, when they came in with the Beatty property, that was their choice to do a master plan for you of the whole thing. That wasn't actually required. So every industrial park, for instance, that comes in doesn't have to do that. They came in with a, an entire, a plan for the entire site. I think even though that would be a challenge, you would have to make sure, for instance, that what you saw lot by lot was providing for the future interaction among other uses and was providing green spaces and walking trails that had the potential to be connected to other. So it, I'm, it would definitely be a challenge. The other thing I would point out is at this point, the only employment campus property in, that's really developable right now in the county is the Delaney property that is owned by the county commissioners. And so it would be, it would be probably marketed to the IDA who would be looking at it comprehensively and trying to market it comprehensively. Again, you're making a change to the code that would apply to all future employment campuses, but at this time, that's really the only property that you're talking about.
Are they, are they gonna lay it out so that there are lots for the whole property and then individually people come in and pick a lot?
I believe that's how they do it, but without Paige and Denise here, I don't wanna answer.
I can just jump in with a little bit of possibility along those lines. So my understanding is if the IDA were to develop that site or any other site, typically what they do, and I think this is what they've done in other places, is the, they don't lay out the whole site and divide it into parcels. Like let's say, you know, if you had a hundred acre piece of property, they wouldn't come in and do ten, ten acre parcels because they want the flexibility to respond to the individual needs of whomever they get to, to come into that development. It could be a place that needs fifteen acres. It could be a place that needs five. It could be a place that needs twenty. So I think they're, they want the flexibility to respond to that, which is why something like this wouldn't, wouldn't necessarily work with that, that model because you're laying something out ahead of time and saying, we know exactly what we wanna put in this whole, on this whole campus. So the flexibility, I think that was one of the criteria that Mary had mentioned, we're trying to find in these revisions would allow for, if somebody like St. John's wanted to come in and do a whole campus master plan, they could, of course. But also if somebody like the IDA wanted to come in and do something on a little bit more of a sort of parcel-by-parcel basis, we're trying to find some, some way to allow for that flexibility, but also to ensure that there's a mechanism where they would still be able to, or still need to meet the purpose and intent of the employment campus, which is a little bit different than, say, an industrial park or, or business park.
Yeah, I definitely, I guess my concern on this is that, and, you know, when you go out and get an A and D lawn and you punch in a road and you put in some utilities and you run the road in a couple hundred feet, that, I've, I've presented a, a master plan for the development that I think I'm going to build. But that doesn't mean the, the balance of the road, the additional five hundred linear feet of road is gonna go exactly where I said it was because, you know, the depth of the next building may be three hundred feet, not two hundred feet, you know? And they, they may want more truck storage. And so we're gonna make the, the trailer depth deeper. So at, at the same time, as I think from a, particularly from a, you know, when we talk about the Delaney property, anyone who were to step on that, I, I think the county commissioners would wanna know, okay, so we've, you've come forward. You wanna, you've, you've got a user for fifteen acres. We've got a hundred acres here. So we're not asking you to plan the, the other eighty-five, but we are asking, we, we do wanna know that you haven't caused economic waste on the balance of the eighty-five. And so how do we know that if we don't have at least a modicum of a study that says this is how water runoff's gonna be treated? This is how, we, we've punched holes and we haven't taken the best. The, the land pretty much is similar. The rock's about as deep as it is everywhere throughout the site. So I'm just not, I'm not, what, I guess I'm asking, what are we gaining by doing, by removing this and updating this? Because if we're asking, if, if developers are saying the reason they're not coming forward on the economic, on the environmental, on the employment campuses that we have is because of the, it's too onerous to plan, to master plan the whole thing? If that's the reason we're doing this, I'm, I'll shut up because you've come forward, so you've got an answer to where I'm headed. You, you know how to answer what I'm trying to ask better than I. Okay, so bring it, but I'll be quiet. Thank you.
No, I just wanna address your, your question about use of the rest of the property and so on. So if there is any sort of disturbance, like if the, if the developer, as you described, took fill from, from one location and left a hole and so on and so forth, all of that disturbance would require a site plan process. And so all of the typical technical reviews that you would expect from stormwater grading, sediment control, forest conservation, all those things would come into effect if the developer was proposing to make those kind of impacts to the remaining eighty-five and was only doing work on the fifteen. So I, I think that concern can be a late, but certainly a good question as far as looking towards what's the vision for the rest of that eighty-five? And I think that was the limitation that, that the IDA and economic development is concerned about is that they don't know what the vision is. These, IDA-type projects often have a build-out of, of ten, twenty years. We're just now finishing up filling the airport project. And, and so, and that's been in the ground for, for decades plus, right? So they just, they don't know what the demand is gonna be. And that's their concern, is that with the way the, the employment campus is described now, you need to walk in with that full vision. And the IDA doesn't, can't work with that business model.
Is this, yeah, I'm, I'm having trouble wrapping my head around this. When, when I hear and I read about this, the first place that comes to my mind is Exchange Boulevard.
Liberty Exchange.
Re-Exchange. How is that different than, than what is talked about here? I, I don't, you know?
Yeah, so, so really the only difference is that Liberty Exchange, there wasn't an upfront concept of what all the buildings would look like and, and, and every size of building and so on. So Liberty Exchange, St. John's property developed that. They, they did an overall site plan and had the, the generalities of, of the, the infrastructure. But they had various areas that were available for development. The back part was, was developed. And we are now currently processing another site plan, amended site plan, that's going to add in the two or three more buildings that will be at the front. And so that'll be before you all to see what will happen there.
But I also think this, this is, I don't wanna say a step up, but this encourages green spaces and walking trails and interaction among the uses.
I was gonna say, that's the one, Exchange, Liberty Exchange doesn't really have a lot of...
Correct.
And this also allows a limited amount of residential. That was the original vision for this. It doesn't have to have it, but it allows for it.
Right.
So I think it's, it's a little bit different if you look at this list of things that have to be shown on the site plan, shown to you that they're meeting.
And I, I don't mean to sound, well, I don't know what the word is, skeptical or kind of one looking at this side-eyed or whatever. Is this a way for a developer or developers? Cause more, I'm assuming more than one developer could be involved in this. For them not to bite off the hundred acres and say, oh, I'm only interested in the fifteen acres so I can do this restaurant and this storefront or, you know, whatever.
No, so I, the real reason that, I mean, the primary driving force behind why we're looking to revise this is that we've had employment campus as, for four years.
Twenty nineteen.
Since twenty nineteen. And there have been no takers for, for the kind of this test case of, of a zoning district, right? And it's, it's owned by the county. And so obviously we're working with economic development and IDA. And the IDA is looking at this property and saying, they can't, they can't do this type of project because they're looking at that ten, twenty-year build-out where they wanna get it kind of set. And then they may have one developer coming in that wants all the acreage or maybe it's two developers that want two sites. And, and so they need that flexibility. And so that's, that's real, the real reason why we're looking to, to make these adjustments that you don't need to have that overall vision of what it's going, how it's going to lay out. But we still want to embrace the concepts behind the employment campus related to the green space, potentially some residential component and so on. So the IDA can work with that. They can, they can kind of build out the site to some extent and get it ready for a developer to come in and then wait for somebody to come in and say, hey, I want twenty acres and I'm going to put X, Y, and Z in place and maybe I'll have a little residential and so on.
I'll say, full disclosure, my family owns adjoining properties there. So I honestly don't see an issue with this. I think it makes sense to be able to do this. The one thing, and I'm sure it was probably in previously, but the sixty-foot building maximum, where it says maximum allowable height in this district shall be sixty feet. It's already hilly and going up there. I, I would, I guess, like to see something where it couldn't be high where there are joining properties that are, like the assisted living, the legacy school. Just that they would be, put them in the back somewhere.
When we put the height restrictions on, well, on, on commercial properties developed and exist, where it was adjacent to existing residential, those restrictions would apply here too, right?
I believe that's worded, "commercial districts," and this isn't. But that could, that could be an amendment. I mean, you could include the employment campus.
I thought they were forty. I thought, like the shopping center.
First of all, it's, it's shorter and, and the setback. We had that, we had the whole, you know? If you, if you move it back, you get a more, you can get a little higher, that kind of thing. So, which makes sense because you're asking to not have a sixty-story. I, I get what you're saying. It makes, or sixty-foot, sixty-story.
Yeah, cause the old people would be like...
Where's my sunshine?
Please forgive me if I say that.
That's an easy fix if that's something you wanted to recommend.
Yeah, the provision that Mr. Lester was talking about is in the commercial district specifically. So, but that is certainly something, a, a revision that could be added to, it's appropriate for employment campus as well.
That was just in consideration of, of residential development that's, that's already there.
Yes.
The height restrictions we talked about. So, you know, I just add my two cents to this that I think without this sort of flexibility, we're gonna be spinning our wheels forever on unemployment campus. So, you know, if you, you've got to add some flexibility to it. And there's gonna be an awful lot of eyes looking at this even before it gets to this, to us at the planning commission. So I think too that what was on the books right now is a discouraging thing for future development, especially when it takes ten to twenty years. And as quickly as technology is changing, you could plan for a hundred and ten thousand square foot building and three years from now, that same building and same institution or whatever they're going to be doing in that building could be done in half the size. So I'm all for the flexibility. I don't see anything in these recommendations that shouldn't be put in. So there's where I stand. Including, forget about the height requirements right now because that, to me, that, that, that has no relevance here. So.
We had one more topic we wanted to talk about, another amendment for consideration that's not process, it's uses. So I'm gonna skip through this because you have it in front of you. It talks about the percentage allowed of retail, service, eating and drinking as well as residential uses. That's nothing that we're looking at this point to change. And then the rest of that section talks about accessory uses, the size of, that those can be bulk requirements. Again, it says the sixty feet. And then that last is that site plan review is required. That would be the section we would look to enhance in the way we just discussed, like talk about what more they have to do at site plan instead of initial development plan. So then we move on to the permitted uses. You don't have that in front of you. I didn't really think you wanted me to print out the whole use table.
It's in here.
Pardon me?
It's in here.
Oh, yes, that is. But in the code part, the use table is pages and pages. So I summarized it here for you. And these are the uses that are allowed by right. What really that you'd be looking for in employment campuses, the several various office uses, maybe a conference center, maybe a hotel. Dwelling only in that, I have no idea what golf course is there. Dwelling, again, that's limited, percentage limited. So these are the things that are permitted by right. Trade schools, professional training center, things like that. Then conditional uses. Conditional uses would be communications towers, again, solar utility buildings. But what I've highlighted there is what economic development brought to our attention, which is light manufacturing is a conditional use. That is something, especially the IDA, would like to be able to market this type of development to being. And it's, it is allowed by conditional use, but they see that and as a hurdle to doing. It's, it's an unknown as you go forward. You'd have to still go through the process. So that is something we would be looking at possibly permitting by right. And if you're interested, that is the definition in the code of light manufacturing so that you can see, there's a similar, there's a definition of heavy manufacturing to show the difference, but... the difference, but basically, this is when you're taking previously prepared materials, processing, fabrication, compounding, et cetera. It's not typically using things that are, have adverse impacts on the neighbors and things like that.
Mary, would you back that up to the conditional uses, please?
Yes, I'm sorry.
One, one more back.
Oh, to the permitted uses?
Permitted uses, yes. Do we have any areas that we would be thinking of that could, you could put a golf course on? That seems like a real waste of, of area to me. I don't understand that one.
It's not enough acreage.
Yeah, I mean, that, that to me is.
Maybe, maybe a putt-putt.
Well, maybe.
Well, I think.
Top golf.
Yeah, top golf.
Simulation.
I think that was put in there at the time, thinking if you ever had a huge parcel that was a employment campus, possibly you could integrate a golf course into it. I don't remember much discussion about it.
The only place I could think of is where the horse facility is going to go. That would be big enough, but.
But it's not zoned employment campus, so, yeah, I wouldn't focus too much on, there's a few uses there that are there because the, the commissioners at the time felt they would be appropriate. It doesn't mean that it's, it's going to happen. But that's the way the use tables are constructed, is there's all these uses and then it shows where they're allowed, where they're not allowed, where they're allowed by conditional use. So that was what was chosen for permitted. That's not what you would, some of those are not what you would see marketed in.
Well, you know, this property's been sitting there for a long time, and I'm in favor of anything to get some development in there. And so, you know, what you're proposing, I think is, is great. So it gives the IDA at least a chance to start putting some stuff in there. Because it's owned by the county, it's not, you know, but we're not getting anything from that property. It's just sitting there, and it's been there for a long time.
So our recommendation would be to change, and, and economic development's recommendation is to make light manufacturing permitted by right, not conditional. And then the other question there is, after looking at those uses, is there anything else other than golf course that you would want to be reconsidered while you're proposing these amendments?
And site plans is enough, to me, is enough control to, any development that goes in there. I mean, we still have complete control over how it's done, so.
Yeah, and just to piggyback on that, most of the things that were described in that, the verbiage on the development plan, they're not exclusive to the employment campus. They are the kinds of things that you would be required to show as part of the site plan process.
Right.
It's just that this particular zoning district was adding almost a duplicate step of having to do a development plan that had the same things, and, and then there, there was language about maybe also having to do a site plan. So it was very confusing how that was constructed, but what the proposal is, would still cover pretty much everything that's already outlined in that development plan language.
So what do you want from us?
With your permission, if we could take this conversation where, and where I think you've got consensus and draft up for next week's, you have Planning Commission meeting on Tuesday, an actual text amendment for you to look at that summarizes what we've talked about and then what we would be looking for after that, and after you discussed it and made any more changes, would be to send it out with a recommendation to the county commissioners.
Then Chairman and I recommend that we move forward with the proposed changes and text amendment and for our review. Is that good enough?
Yeah, absolutely.
Sounds good to me.
Do it.
Did you say that send it to the commissioners?
Well, we would bring you the, kind of the red line of the text, so that'll be at the next meeting. So we don't really, we don't need a formal motion or anything.
We just know where we're headed.
Yeah, if I could just very quickly recap, just for the record, then. So what we'll be doing is revising the text in a way that you can track those changes to reflect the, the elimination of the language about the development plan, replacing that with a requirement to submit a site plan with the addition of a, either a text or a graphic depiction or explanation of how the proposal meets the purposes and intent of the zone. And then we'd also be looking at moving light industrial from conditional use to a principal permitted use.
That's exactly what I just said.
Right.
Yeah.
Thanks. Very erudite there.
Okay, with that.
Nice job, Ralph.
All right, thank you.
Okay.
Sorry, public comment for the mass public here.
Public comment, seeing none. So, do we need a voice vote for that? Nope, nope. Okay. Any vote? Nope.
Okay.
There you go. All right, item nine, solar text submit and discussion.
Yes, good evening. So, yes, I will be taking you through the multi-page slide deck here, but we are not going to have to touch on each slide individually, so I will make it as quick and painless as possible. So we provided prior to the meeting, the slide deck, which seeks to compare the state code, state regulations that came out, and the county code and the changes that are proposed. We also sent you a copy of the state law that was passed, as well as the full text amendment that we're proposing. I've printed out copies of those with page numbers, so that if we need to reference any specific page and so on. But before we start going through the presentation, just wanted to bring everybody up to speed, remind everybody as how we got here. So, as you may remember, many years ago, the, our code allowed for solar development on agricultural land with various types of requirements and, and so on. The Board of County Commissioners did not feel that, that solar development on agricultural land was appropriate, so we revised our code and prohibited on, in agricultural land, but it was still allowable in various zoning districts such as industrial and, and so on. The state of Maryland then has, has a process going through the Public Service Commission and that projects can get a certificate of public convenience and necessity if it's two megawatts in size or larger, that entities can get that approval, and then they can preempt local zoning. So they can, they can allow for solar development on agricultural land even though our code prohibits it. And we currently have seven projects that are working through the process. Several of those have received their CPCN, and they have started the development review process. One of the concerns that we had, as we became aware that these projects were going through the CPCN process, was that when we eliminated the code related to agricultural zoning and solar, it got rid of all of the design requirements. So we potentially, we knew we were going to have these projects coming before us, but with no code requirements, local code requirements for us to review against them. So in a lot of, what's, what's, in a lot of uses, basically you have what is, where is it allowed by zoning, and then you have requirements. We got rid of everything related to agriculture, so we prohibit the use, we didn't have any requirements codes because we removed that section. So this past fall, you may remember, we developed generic code requirements for all solar projects. So any project, regardless of zoning district, would have certain requirements that they would have to follow. We were still prohibiting it on agricultural land, but if we were preempted by a project coming through the CPCN process, we at least would have requirements that we could then still enforce. So that's what we did this past fall. What has happened this past spring is that the state has passed new regulations, which has completely preempted our ability to prohibit solar. So the, so the use has completely been preempted from us. So now, a project that's less than two megawatts, that does not need a CPCN, we are required to process as a principal permitted use. So that's one primary change we have to make to our code. The state has preempted us in that regards. The state has also gone through and, and worked on, and, and required certain design requirements in our code, so we are going to have to change those as well. And we'll get to those, but an easy example to think of are setbacks. The Board of County Commissioners set setbacks at 400 feet. The state has said, we cannot set those any higher than 100 feet, so we need to review, revise our code, and so it matches the state to 100 feet. We could set it lower than that, but I don't know that there's going to be any inclination to do so. So those are the types of changes that we have to make, and so that's what we'll be walking through. The other topic that we'll be talking about is related to battery storage, right? Energy storage devices. And just to explain what we're talking about here, we're talking about before the meter energy storage. So what that means is, if you think about your house, you have a meter at your house, right? And you may have solar, and a lot of residential solar setups have a battery associated with it, so that you're charging the battery during the day and then you can use that during the night. That's after the meter. That's not what we're talking about. What we're talking about is before the meter. So it's a part of the energy distribution network. The idea being is that the overall network during high, periods of high energy production, there are large batteries that can then suck up that energy. And then, they have not spoken much about the design requirements. So what we're proposing is we add those design requirements in now already, so that if somebody comes in to propose that type of facility, we've got design requirements that are specific to it. And we have had people who have made inquiries. So this isn't something that's imaginary, this is something that's coming. So that's the five-minute overview of what we're going to be looking at. Any questions on?
I think, I know you and I were both here when we did the solar thing, and we put it in the code. Michael, you may have been here on the tail end of that, is that right?
I was here.
You were here, okay. So, we were told, and it's just a clear, it's just to put it in the context in my own head, we were told if we don't do something, something will be done for us. So do something and bring it to the Board of County Commissioners. So we recommended a change to the code, we adopted it, and then we took it out. I, I'm curious if these new regulations are in response to some counties, not just us, not being proactive. And, and so the state said, well, if you're not going to do anything, we're going to help you. What was this, was this kind of a stick-it-to-the, to-the-people kind of thing? Or is this just, guys, you know, you got to get in front of this? How do you see this? From a, help us digest what, what, why we're doing this? Because I was in favor of what we did the last time, but I know that the agricultural community was really divided, because there were some people who were ready to lease some property that they didn't think was very productive, and then, but there were a lot of people who were saying, look, you know, we don't want this, we don't want to be staring at it. So help put it, put that part into context as to, why is the state being so?
Calm down.
Yeah, why, why are we, why is this being pressed?
Yeah, so there, there is a very strong lobbying association related to solar, and it also fits in with the state of Maryland's goals for renewable energy. And as you've probably heard through the discussions related to like the power lines and so on, the state of Maryland imports something like 60% of, of the, our power that we need. And so there's this big push to, to put on, bring online renewable energy and, and so on, which, solar, wind power, et cetera. And, and so there's this big push for it. What the PSC has done and the state has done is they have taken these, these rules that existed, have existed for decades related to nuclear power plants and coal power plants and so on, which nobody, nobody wants in their backyard, right? And there's this recognition that for the greater good, the state would need to step in and allow for these types of, of facilities, these big power plants, to be located in certain locations. They have taken that authority and used it to the much smaller scale of these solar facilities, and that's where they're deriving their, their authority to say, you know what, there is the greater need for power generation in the state, and, and we are going to, we are going to override local zoning use to encourage and to allow for this solar development.
Okay. And then I guess the last question I'll have, and I'll turn you loose, is if we had something on the code that contemplated, you know, a solar field of four megawatts or less allowed in certain places, whatever, would the state still be able to come in, if, if there was a project that size, they would still be able to tell us where and how we could put it in, whether we had it on the books or not? They could still?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. All right. So I can put it into context, because I just contracted electric yesterday for the next year. So before, our demand rate for commercial on Potomac Edison was like $26 or $28 for peak demand. For the next year, it's 260. It went up 10, 10 times X.
Wow.
So that added several cents a kilowatt hour just for the demand charge.
Okay.
So that's, and the problem is.
It's a number.
We all know that solar doesn't fix demand.
Right.
Yeah.
Batteries do, even though I don't, I think they're terrible, but, you know, they help fix the solar problem with demand.
I just wonder when the well's going to run dry, because there's not a week it goes by that I don't get two or three or four inquiries, either by phone or through the mail, that's going to make, that's going to make me a millionaire on 30 acres.
Yeah.
Now, who's paying for all that? We know who's paying for it, so it won't get on that soapbox. But this well is going to run dry. So it is what it is. But Chris, I do have some really profound questions here.
Okay, good.
About these storage facilities.
Yes, yeah, and we'll definitely get into that, yeah.
Is it too soon to talk?
I think it's too, too soon to talk about the details. Yep, yep.
Janice is leaving. Is there anything we need to do to transfer the gavel formally? Okay, we just do it. Okay, thank you.
You might not want to get your plan.
Yeah, I might.
All right, so like I said, I, there are a lot of slides here. Most of it is to provide you all with context. The first couple of slides are what I presented to you all to begin with at the introduction at the last meeting, so I'm going to kind of skip through those. I do have, so a lot of the, a lot of the code changes that we're proposing, we really don't have a lot of choice about. Things like setbacks and, and changing the setback from 400 to 100 feet, that sort of thing. What I've attempted to do is add in boxes here to indicate discussion items. And so, so we'll, as we go through, we'll, we'll hang at these and, and would like to get your, your feedback. I did skip over one that I did not create a box for, and that's, here's a good place to talk to it. So as I was saying, the state has essentially said that proposed solar projects between 1 megawatt and 5 megawatts must be considered principal permitted uses in all zoning districts. So we have no authority to prohibit anything between 1 and 5 megawatts. So the question I've got, and the first discussion item, is do we care about projects that are less than 1 megawatt? The state has allowed us authority that we could prohibit them, we could, we could create our own requirements and so on. Not to steer the discussion too much, but we've got a lot to get through, but my personal thought is, I don't believe we will see a lot of 1-megawatt-type projects. It, I don't believe that there's a, there's enough demand.
The scale?
The scale is not there.
Well, the cost for the interconnect costs too much.
Exactly.
Even think about it.
Yeah. So in theory, we could, we could put in prohibitions and requirements. We would have to increase the amount of code here to address that specific scenario for less than 1 megawatt. I don't think it's worth the squeeze, but would certainly like your thoughts.
I, how do we tax agricultural property that is then approved with, is there a way to tax it so that there's a disincentive?
So the county is not responsible for taxation. Taxation. So, the county is not responsible for taxation. Taxation is, is determined by the state, the State Department of Taxation.
So we can't use a county property tax?
So, the county establishes the rate, the, 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 the scale, or, I'm not sure, I'm drawing a blank what the term is, but is, is determined by the state based on the use. So, if you have an, you could have an agriculturally zoned property, the county zones it as agriculture, but it's, but it's residentially developed, so the use is residential. So zoned agriculture is used residential, the state will tax as residential, because that's the use. Conversely, you could have an industrial zoned property, the county could zone it industrial, but it's never been developed, and it's farmed, so that the state would tax it as the use as agricultural.
Got it.
Does that answer your question?
But if it's agricultural, and you put a 5 megawatt solar on it, then it's taxed as?
Good question, but, but in certain counties, such as ours, there is also a tax on the, the real property, the, the infrastructure that's there. So if you put in so much solar, the value of that, there's taxation based on that.
So does, does the county have a different tax rate for solar?
You're getting, you're getting deep into.
This is why I'm asking the question.
Should, and, and because the use, the use of that land has changed from ag. So why, why would it not be any different than when you're, you're taxed ag on industrial land, as long as you keep it, keep, or use it for growing crops? As soon as you change the use of that, it changes to industrial, commercial, or whatever that use is, or residential. There should be no difference in, in that concept. So that land should be taxed as industrial or commercial.
Or a new zone altogether.
Absolutely.
And a new tax.
And it should be for the duration of the time that that's.
Right, that's the use.
But the state of Maryland sets those uses, not us.
Well, we need, then, we need to recommend to some of our representatives, I mean, Maryland's looking for money all over the place. Why wouldn't they look for money in a, in a responsible way like this?
Right.
If they're willing to waste it on a lot of this other stuff, why not do it in a, the right way with a use, taxing as commercial? So yes, Chris, they would tax those solar panels, but they gotta tax that land underneath it, because it's changed the use.
Yeah. So, I can.
Ag land is capped. In, in the state of Maryland, there's, there's a cap on what you can assess ag land at. So, that has to go away, if you're going to change the use, and you do change this. So, I mean, I don't know what avenue we should take. Somebody should have looked into this way before that. I'm not talking about us.
Right.
Or Cal County, but it's just the irresponsibility of what's going on here is, is mind-boggling.
They missed it.
Yeah.
You better believe it.
So, we can look into and find out what the taxation rate would be if, if a farm were converted to, to solar, absolutely. But again, we have zero control over that. That's the state of Maryland Department of Taxation. So, we can find out what it is, but we don't have any control over that.
Doesn't Carroll County set a tax rate for residences?
Real property?
Real property?
We, we set the.
It's a percentage of.
It's the percentage of the value, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. So, we could set our own.
Yeah, but the state determines what it's worth.
Okay, so, I opened up, I'm sorry, I opened up a can of worms.
No, you didn't, Peter. This needs to be talked through.
I totally get it. But, but again, what we, we're, we're focusing on, I thought, what I think what we should focus on is the zoning, like, like what you, where you wanted to go. You've heard, you know, some, an end run, you know, in terms of, hey, you know, there may be a way to do this from a real property assessment standpoint. So, y'all do with that, take that to the treasure and let him figure it out.
I will get you more information.
And I apologize, because I didn't mean this to go, I, I took us off, I was, I think I'm out of order when I bring that up. So, let me, I'll bring this back, and you, you can call me out of order, you got the gavel. Let's, let's move on to the regulations.
No problem.
I don't think you're out of order, I think it's a good question to ask in this situation.
I agree.
I know it's taking up time, Chris.
No worries.
Your intent for.
Yeah.
I'll move this clue.
For what we're looking at here, but it's an integral part of what's going on here, because this is happening so quickly without a lot of good thought behind it.
Agreed.
Follow the money.
Yeah.
Okay.
I can just note that on, on the tax assessor's website, it says land used for non-utility generators, solar farms, cannot receive an ag use assessment.
There you go.
But the verbiage only talks about then taxation of the, of the equipment.
Yeah.
As a prop, yeah.
That's what I'm getting at.
We can get a more complete answer, but that's a little bit of a, it's not considered ag.
And it's not, it's not considered zoning, but again, I think that's, that's a way, where, please move on.
Sure. So, just wanted to close out that one, that first discussion, though. Is there any desire that we look at any sort of code requirements or prohibitions on projects under 1 megawatt? Very good.
What does the state do anyhow?
So, the state, you only need a CP CN for 2 megawatts and greater. So the state would not be involved. So between 1 and 2, we are required to treat it as a principal permitted use. We cannot prohibit it. But under 1, we could prohibit it if we so desired.
Okay, so it sounds like we need to have something to deal with. We don't need to deal with under 1, but we need to deal with 1 to 2.
Yes, and we are, yes.
You're the man. Thank you, sir.
All right. So, for 5 megawatts, for over 5 megawatts, one of the things that the state allows is that we, if you have tiers adopted, you can prohibit 5 megawatts in larger facilities in tiers 1 and 2. Now, as we've presented to you all before, the county, Carroll County did not adopt tiers. And as a refresher, tier 1 and tier 2 are basically our growth areas. So, tier 1 is currently served by public sewer, tier 2 is future growth areas planned for sewer. And so, basically, we're talking about the Freedom District, right? Because our municipalities did adopt tiers, and, and our code doesn't apply to them anyways, so what we're talking about is, if we had adopted tiers, we could prohibit a 5 megawatt or larger, or over 5 megawatt project in the Freedom District. I don't know the reality of someone looking to propose a 5, a greater than 5 megawatt project in the Freedom District. The general rule of thumb is between like 5 and 7 acres per megawatt. So you're talking about a 25 to 30, 35 thereabouts acre solar facility in the Freedom District, which the value of the land probably doesn't lend itself to a solar facility. I do have an, a, a end around that, that I would recommend, and, and I appreciate Liz's thoughts on, on if this would, would fly. My recommendation will, and I'll show you where I have it in the code, my recommendation would be that we say that we prohibit 5, greater than 5 megawatt projects in designated growth areas. I believe that language meets the intent of what the state has allowed. It's just that it gets around that we never adopted tiers. So that would be my recommendation. I don't know whether it would stand up if, if challenged, but I think it meets the intent of what the state has proposed.
When we, when we didn't adopt the tiers, was this solar language out there?
No, tiers was back a decade ago.
Never even a consideration.
No, no. And the challenge that if, if we wanted to try and adopt tiers, tiers can only be adopted as part of a comprehensive plan process. So we're certainly discussing it now, and, and there may be some merit to thinking about adopting tiers from a housing perspective. But if we, but I would stay away from a knee-jerk reaction to adopt, try and adopt tiers for the purposes of solar, because again, I don't think it's worth the squeeze. I don't see large, a greater than 5 megawatt project being proposed in the Freedom. I may be wrong, but I don't, I don't foresee it. And the, the cumbersomeness of trying to adopt tiers in a comprehensive plan process when we're already going through a comprehensive plan process to get it in place sooner would be extremely difficult.
Refresh our memories, please.
Yes.
How many acres are we talking for 5 megawatts?
A minimum of 25, probably upwards of, of 35, yeah.
There really aren't that many down there.
Exactly.
So if.
Like an 80 property.
Right.
If Walmart came up and said, we want to put solar panels on the roof, and we want to put solar panels in the parking lot on pedestals, it still wouldn't be 5 megawatts. It might be close, but probably not, right?
Right. Yeah.
All right. Yeah, no, I, I got no problem. That sounds good to me, yeah.
All right. So moving on, another provision that the state law allows for is if, if you have a priority preservation area, if you're, the amount of solar gets to 5% of your priority preservation area, you can prohibit projects greater than 5 megawatts. So to put that in context, this is a map of the Carroll County Priority Preservation Area. It's just shy of 93,000 acres. 5% would be 4,645 acres. We currently only have one solar project in there. It's, I don't recall the acreage, but it's probably around 15 acres or so. It is going to be a long time before we get anywhere close to 45, 4,600 acres. There is some discussion, I've heard some, some discussion that there are some counties that are going to be asking for this requirement to be tweaked in that, the next legislative session, doing things like excluding the amount of preserved farms out of that acreage, so it's a percentage of what's remaining, but that's not what the current state law says. So, perhaps next year, there will be something that, that would benefit us to consider. But at this point, my recommendation would be that we don't try and put something like this into code. It is state law. So, if by some chance we get upwards of 4,600 acres, and we want to prohibit a, a new 5 megawatt project, state law would allow us to. I don't think that we need to put anything in our county code related to this prohibition. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay. So, I am going to skip ahead to our, our tables of allowable, allowable uses. So this first one is for agriculture and conservation districts. This should look familiar. It's, it's throughout the, our zoning code. And so what I've added in is a front-of-the-meter energy storage device. And as I've said, the state law says that we have to allow that in any zoning district, so I added those in as a principal permitted use. The additional regulations that are listed there, 158002 is for definitions, 158040 is for setbacks, and we'll be talking about that in a minute. And then 15815301 is a new section related specifically to those energy storage devices, so that's the cross-reference. And then what I did was I separated out the solar energy generating systems into 5 megawatts or less, which are, have to be required by the state law in both, as principal permitted uses. And then solar energy generating systems greater than 5 megawatts. And as I mentioned on the previous meeting, we can prohibit those in residentially zoned districts. And conservation zone is our medium residential, which per the, the state definitions. So, what I would propose is we're required to allow it in agricultural, but we're allowed to prohibit it in conservation. For the residential zoning district, again, same changes as far as the types of uses. Again, permitted, energy storage devices permitted in all districts, 5 megawatts or less permitted in all districts. And then we're allowed to prohibit greater than 5 megawatts in residentially zoned districts. And then commercial, industrial, same sort of changes. And in this case, conserva, our, our commercial and employment campus, because those can have a component of residential, we can prohibit it, but I 1 and I 2, we would have to permit it, the greater than 5 megawatts. So do all those use tables make sense?
Yeah.
All right. So.
Okay, here we go.
Here we go. And, and this is probably going to be the most confusing part of what we talk about today. So, there are, if you look at the permutations of use and ground versus roof-mounted, there are four permutations. There is accessory use, ground-mounted, accessory use roof-mounted, and ground-mounted and roof-mounted principal permitted. And so what we want, need to do is, is we attempted to clarify that through our code here. So, the difference between accessory and principal permitted use, what we have, what we had established previously when we talked about this before, is that it's considered an accessory use if you produce less than 200% of the use of the principal use on the property. What that allows for is the scenario where you're building, you're building a new building, and you estimate your energy usage to be X amount, and you want to put solar on there. We allow that as an accessory use as long as it's not more than 2 times X, right? That way, if you in the future need to expand the amount, you can build the amount of solar you might need for expansion in the future, right? If you are, if it's over 200%, over twice as much as what you use, then it would no longer be accessory. So, that's, that's the difference between accessory and, and principal use. So, the first permutation we're talking about here is roof-mounted accessory. So, what we did was we added in that definition for clarity for roof-mounted. We want to encourage the accessory use of, of solar, right? And so if you're residential, if you're a farm, if you need power as an accessory use, we want to encourage that, right? So we are allowing that, and this was the definition we had before, we allow it everywhere except for the historic district. So, and that minor change, just for clarity, we had that in there as number 1. It just flowed better putting that back into, under B. So that's, that's why number 1 is, is removed. One of the, and, and some of these changes are not based on, on state legislation changes. Some of these also came from our zoning administrator. After we had these in place, and she's been working with them for a little bit, she had some recommend, recommendations for changes. One of the change, the change that's under what was 4 and is now 3, is that we previously prohibited solar from going 25 feet higher, any more than 25 feet higher than the existing building, right? That, that's cumbersome. And so what her recommendation was, and the change that we made, is that the height restriction is based on the bulk requirements of that zoning district. So if you're limited to 50 feet, which is in commercial, right, your building and your solar would be limited to that 50 feet. So, so if you've got a 30-foot building, then you could put solar on top of it. If you're already at 50, and your bulk requirement is 50, then you can't put the solar on top of it. So, it makes it a little clearer, it, it ties it to the bulk requirement rather than some arbitrary 25 feet higher than the existing building. So, that's, that's the intent of the change there.
25 is a lot.
Yes, yeah. So, the next permutation, as it were, is ground-mounted accessory. And we already had a lot of code here, and so don't necessarily need to re-go through it all. But essentially, what we're saying is that ground-mounted, the amount of ground-mounted solar as an accessory use is limited to the size of the roof area that you have. So if you have a thousand-square-foot residence, you can put 1,000 square feet of ground-mounted solar. So that's, that's basically how ground-mounted accessory use works. We did have a variance in here that if you were in conservation zoned, and a lot greater than 3 acres, you could get a variance on that if you could show that the amount of power that you need could not be met by that surface area, right? So again, and, and we're changing it to the 200% rather than 100%. So, if, if the amount of power that you need could not be met by the roof area, you could get a variance if you were in conservation on a lot greater than 3 acres. So that's the minor change there. And what Anastasia, our zoning administrator, pointed out, is that we were silent on conservation less than 3 acres. And what Anastasia, our zoning administrator, pointed out is that we were silent on conservation less than three acres. So she recommended that we add in that last sentence, which says, "No variance to the size requirement of the ground-mounted system on the lots of three acres or less in the conservation district." So if you're a conservation district, you have a house that's 1,000 square feet, you can have 1,000 square feet of ground-mounted solar. You cannot get a variance to have that larger. Is that all clear?
Okay.
So now we're getting to principal use. And what we did was we eliminated the differentiation between ground-mounted and roof-mounted. So this applies to, as a principal use across the board. So this, the table is basically a replication of the use table that you saw previously. We had a section on size limits. That has to be struck completely because we have to allow solar as a principal permitted use. So we can't regulate how big or small it is. If it's between two and five megawatts, we can't prohibit it. So we got rid of the section on size requirements. So now we're talking about the process. So from a process perspective, we previously referred the applicant to the section of chapter 155, which is our development review section, that specifically talks to site plan process. We realized that that was a mistake in that if you have even an accessory use that's greater than 5,000 square feet, we still want the applicant to go through a site plan process. But it may be a simplified or a grading only. So we just changed the reference to the site plan requirements in 155, which is 155-050 rather than 155-02. So that's the only reason for that change. Now, this is a complicated one and took me some time to reason through. And this was pointed out by Anastasia, and now it makes perfect sense. When we put the code in place in the fall, there were projects that were already in process. And we did not want to make, they hadn't finished the process. So what we did is we essentially put in a grandfathering provision, which said that if they were in review prior to November 1st of 2024, that they could go through the process with the old code, right? It makes perfect sense. The complexity, though, is when that project is complete. So it's in the ground, complete. It's been in the ground for five years. It is technically non-conforming to our current code. So if they want to come back and revise that site, if they want to add a couple solar panels, or if they want to make some sort of revision, they would be considered a non-conforming use because they don't conform to the current code. So the question is, do we want to prevent them from ever changing their site because they're non-conforming? I don't think that's really the intent. So what we added in was, "Any future alterations or expansion shall be subject to, shall not be subject to these provisions." So if you were, if you developed under the previous code and then you were looking to add in, add some or so on to the site, you could not be penalized because you followed the previous code. The example being, and the big issue when we were looking at this before, is our setback requirement. So the setback requirement previously, some of these projects had setbacks of like 50 feet, right? We revised the code to 400. We're about to change it down to 100, but they're still going to be non-conforming technically to our current code. If they want to go through a revision, now they would be non-conforming and there could be prohibitions on changes to that site because they don't conform to our current code because they only have a 50-foot setback. So what we're recommending is those few projects that went through the process with the old code, that they would be, continue to be subject to the old code if they go through an alteration or expansion. Is that clear?
Yeah.
Liz, could I explain that any better? Or can you explain it any better?
You're only talking about a few, though.
We're only talking about a few, and they're on industrial-zoned property and so on, so.
Basically grandfathering.
Yes, we're basically grandfathering and keeping them from being a non-conforming use, which has other implications.
That makes sense.
It does make sense to do it.
Yeah.
Anna would be proud of that explanation. Anna would be proud of that explanation.
Thank you. All right. So now we're getting into some of the requirements. This one, I'm very much on the fence with. The state law says that any project in an overburdened or underserved community, actually, let me go back to the previous slide. Here's the state law. And I put in blue what those definitions are, what overburdened community means and what underserved community means. So they're basically saying that if there's a project proposed in one of those, that there needs to be two public meetings that the applicant holds in those communities to discuss the project. So it's a state requirement. Currently, the way you determine that, the Maryland Department of the Environment has an environmental justice tool that helps you determine if you're in overburdened communities or underserved communities and so on. That tool's currently not functioning. So I'm sure there are other ways that you can check on census information and so on and those determinations. I'm not sure what the quick and easy way to determine that. So it's just interesting commentary on this type of legislation.
Do we think any portion of our county is over?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, there are. Absolutely.
Great.
So what I'm recommending is that we add in this section, which basically says that projects in those communities, as defined by 1701 of the State Environmental Article and identified by the Maryland Department of the Environment, shall require the developer to hold at least two public meetings in the community where the solar energy generating system is to be constructed, et cetera, et cetera. So this is basically straight from the state code. I don't think there's any harm in us putting that in there. It matches the state code. So it's, I think it's reasonable to put in there. The developer is required by state law to address this themselves. So is it redundant for us to state it as well? Maybe, but I don't think it's a bad thing to have in there. And it helps us from a process perspective, if we know it's in our code, that we can look for that. And our development review coordinators can say, hey, did you do this, just as a double check?
And your comment in the yellow box? I was reading that and thought about that. I mean, shouldn't we hold the state accountable on their end? It's a two-way street.
Mm-hmm.
So shouldn't that economic justice system work and be tested?
Yes.
Available?
One would assume, yes.
Should we have language that that's the case?
We can't really control that aspect of it, although we can really say is that if MDE identifies that this is a community that's overburdened or underserved, then you have to do this. That determination is going to be up to the applicant to communicate with MDE, whether they use the tool that's online or they communicate directly with MDE. It'll sort of be their responsibility. But it is something that our development review coordinators can say, hey, we know that this project is in this area. It's our understanding that this is an underserved community. Have you done this? So it helps the process if we have that language in here. This is what I was talking about regarding the designated growth areas and the tiers. So this would be my suggestion, and simply that solar energy generating systems greater than five megawatts are not permitted in designated growth areas. I think that meets the intent of the state law, even though it's not specific to the tiers. So this was an interesting note in the state law that many of the site design requirements that we're going to discuss, it says, "This subsection does not apply to agrivoltaics," which, as you may remember, that's where you have the co-location of agriculture and the solar panels. It's interesting that they have that. The discussion would be, do we want to develop a whole separate set of codes when agrivoltaics is being proposed? I would submit no.
But I do want to ask something about that. Who monitors the huge patches of Johnson grass that might be grown all around these places? Who monitors the, all the noxious weeds that might be outlawed? Who's responsible for that?
So the way that it would work is that the part of the site plan is going to require that there'd be maintenance and we would hold a bond and so on. If somebody would complain, we would do an investigation and we could require the applicant, the property owner, to address those issues.
All right. So it would be the property owner?
Well, somebody would complain. So we're complaint-driven. So if somebody complains and says, "This solar field is overrun with Johnson grass," we would go out and investigate it. We affirm that it is. We could then require them, because of the site plan process and the approved site plan, that they have to address that.
So it would be the landowner who leased the property and not the solar company that is leasing the property?
Yes. But that's an agreement between those parties.
Where are Roundup Works shot all over its solar panels?
Excellent question. Yes.
We'll find out. We'll find out. They're cracking to pieces.
So now we're getting into the requirements. So as I've mentioned before, setbacks, that's an easy one. We are required by the state law, it can't be greater than 100 feet. As you may remember in our previous code, we had set that at 400, but we allowed you all to reduce that. But because, but you couldn't reduce it any less than 100 feet. So we're going to strike that. And the state added an additional provision, which we will certainly take, which is that solar panels and their structures shall not be located within 150 feet of the nearest wall of a residential building. So we'll just take that verbiage and add it in. The question that I have for you all is, these type of bulk requirements, these setbacks and so on, our zoning administrator has the authority, if a variance is requested, to reduce those. That's per our code. So if a solar developer were to request that, "I would like my setback to be 50 feet rather than 100 feet," she would have, she has the authority to approve that variance. So the question then is, should a variance be allowed for these setbacks? If, we could certainly add it to the code that no variance to that provision is allowed, if that was your desire. If you want these setbacks to be treated the same as any other sort of bulk requirement where she has the ability to approve that variance. If justified and so on, there's a process that needs to go, she needs to go through, the applicant needs to go through. But this is one of those requirements that I think, my gut feel was that people were pretty adamant about these setbacks. I mean, it was, the Board of County Commissioners set it at 400 feet for a reason. Where we have to knock it down to 100, do we want to prohibit any variance to that?
I, go ahead.
I was going to say yes, because I remember the uproar from the community about the look of these things. And the closer they got to roads and ruining the view and all that kind. That was like the concern from a lot of citizenry.
So when you say yes, you're saying, yes, don't allow it.
Don't allow change to the city.
If anything, you can increase it, but, and I would, yeah, I'm not, because we were doing, we were giving every variance, every time somebody came in here, we gave them a variance. And it was just very frustrating. Because, yeah, because I think the main thing that people were complaining about was visual. So if we're going to reduce, we're basically reducing the buffer and the landscape, the landscaping that can be put in there. And if anything, I would like to see the landscape requirements increased by us as to what goes in that buffer. Does that make sense?
It does, but we're going to get to that, but we're not allowed to.
Preview of coming attractions.
Yes.
If the maximum we can do is 100 feet, that should be it.
Okay. Yep, understood.
No variance.
No variance.
Maybe I can start asking this question.
Sure, please.
About setbacks.
Yes.
Does that apply to the solar storage?
We are going, we'll get to that.
Okay.
Yes.
So I'm still not ready to.
Not quite yet. Yeah, we're not into the battery storage yet. Yes. And I think I've got a good answer for you on that one. I think you'll like my answer on that one. So visual impact. So as part of the CPCN process, so if you're proposing a two-megawatt or larger facility, the Public Service Commission requires a visual impact study. They have said that if it's less than two megawatts, where it's not going through the Public Service Commission, it's locally regulated, we can require a visual impact study if we so desire. And it has under, if you'll get one, "Shall mitigate the visual impact of the solar generating station on preservation areas, rural legacy areas, priority preservation areas, public parks, scenic rivers, or byways, designated heritage areas, or historic structures or sites listed, et cetera." So the question then is, do we want to require a visual study? And if the desire is yes, then what does that look like and who approves it and so on? Now, I can say what we already have in our code. So this is what we currently have. So I think we already address it to the extent of what we previously thought was appropriate. But the state is allowing us to require the study and so on. But I won't read through them, but these are the requirements that we already have related to visual impact. So my question to you all is, do we want to go above and beyond this? But I would like then some guidance as to, what does that study look like? That's a very qualitative analysis. And I'm not sure what that looks like. I guess this is what I.
Is it defined ugly?
Exactly.
Yeah.
Exactly.
Well, I guess the one thing that this allows us to do is if we, if they're going to put in plant material and just the topography of the ground is such that a berm would help conceal it, we would know it if they show us what the height of the berm is. But we won't know it if they don't.
The state prohibits us from requiring a berm.
Well, flip and shoot. I mean, we got dirt. That's one thing we got. Let's use it. All right, never mind. I'm moving on.
We can hold this for, and you can mull it over. This is, again, the difficulty here is it's very qualitative, right? We previously, last fall, discussed these sort of, and you can see as you read through these, it's, whenever possible, those sorts, that sort of language. So it allows you all to look at the site plan and say, wait a second. You've got this huge site, this huge property, and you're putting the solar panels here, and it's going to be visible from this historic area. It's possible for you to move it over here, right? That's a reasonable sort of change. I don't think it would fly that the site is only this size. This is where they're looking to put it. It happens to be near a priority preservation area. You're not going to be able to prohibit it because of the view shed, right? So this gives you some ability to qualitatively review the site and maybe optimize it to lessen the visual impact. But you're not going to, certainly not going to be able to prohibit the development because of visual impact. So. So I'd say give it some thought. Electrical connections. We eliminated accessory use because we figured, we determined that this may create confusion from a permits and inspections perspective. If it's an accessory use, the applicant is going through a process with our permits and inspections folks that may have all the building codes and so on and so forth. Putting in some requirements in our code related to that for accessory use, we thought would be confusing. It's not needed because they're already addressing it from permits and inspections, building permits perspective. What we did want to add in, and I think this is appropriate, is that the developer shall provide notice to the Department of Fire and EMS of the facility, of a map, and the location of any solar collector or isolator switches. So this is something that, again, came from the state law and I thought, yeah, this is appropriate. So let's add this in as a requirement from electrical connection perspective.
Is there any requirement for like inspections, annual inspections, you know, anything like that?
No.
Are there any requirements for electrical power lines for inspections? You know, things like that? Because I think where we're getting, when we're getting into this kind of stuff, it just seems to me there should be. But if there isn't for those other.
At least not from a county perspective. I'm, I'm not an expert on, on electrical generation and transmission lines and so on. One would have to assume that there are, from the state regulatory perspective, that, that there's certain requirements, but, I mean, we can certainly try and dig some, some information up, but that's typically not something that the county would regulate.
Chris, I don't think they inspect them very often, because out in our valley, there's a huge solar installation on industrial zone land. And it's, it's a solar system that rotates with the sun. And half of that solar system sit there not rotating for six and a half months. So nobody, nobody was inspecting very well there, I'll tell you. So I don't know how much solar they missed out on, but it only sat in one position, half of it for six and a half months. I don't know, just something you observe as you drive by every day.
Okay, next is fencing. Some of the items that the state had put in their regulations, we did not have, so we said, yeah, we'll add those in. Such as, "The fence shall be no closer than fifty feet to any public road right-of-way." I think that's a great thing to, to have in there. We did not think of it before, so we'll add that in. They also had a requirement related to chain-link fencing, if it's used, that it should be black or green vinyl mesh, so we would add that. They also had, set a maximum height of fence. So we had a minimum, and the state said, "Well, it can't be higher than twenty feet, so we'll add that in." This is another, we, we now have another item under D, that the way this came to be was, we had a, you may remember, we had a work group that, that talked about solar. And one of the things that they recommended was that we require opaque fences to help screen them. And so that recommendation went into the recommended code and went through the process and, and was approved. What we've heard from some of the developers and the PSC and so on is that, that requiring that, it could be considered onerous. And so the question being is, do we want to remove that? The, the argu-, some of the arguments I've heard is that opaque fencing then prohibits wildlife from being able to, to move through the area, things like that. It's not really necessary because of other landscaping and, so I'm throwing it out there, whether we should remove that, that provision, that it be opaque or not.
I assure you, it will not stop wildlife from moving through the area.
I'd leave it until the state tells us we can't.
Okay. I'm, I'm fine with that.
Yeah.
I like onerous.
Okay.
You like onerous. I like to preserve the right to be onerous. Preserve my right to be unreasonable.
No problem. Okay, landscape buffer. I'm gonna skip-
My attorney trained me well.
The new constitutional amendment.
Free speech being onerous.
So from a, from a landscape buffer perspective, there were a couple of, of changes that the state had. Some I thought were good additions, such as specifying that the plan should be prepared by a qualified professional, a landscape architect, that sort of thing. They did throw in their requirements for existing buffers, and so we, we took that language. So existing buffers of wooded vegetation fifty feet or more in width located on the subject property may be determined to meet the required buffer, which I think that's reasonable. We've, we're requiring a thirty-five-foot buffer be constructed. If you've got fifty feet of existing woods, it, it may be determined. So we could look at it and say, yeah, this is a good, solid fifty feet. We're not gonna necessarily take the applicant's word for it if they got a bunch of scrub trees that happen to be fifty feet wide, if it's not meeting what we feel is appropriate.
Is this on all zoning areas?
Yes.
So, and we can't make that retroactive, that's for sure, because-
Yes.
The ones that are out our way just has a chain-link fence around it, that's it.
Yeah. Uh, as far as what's planted for landscape buffer, the state stepped in on that. We had originally had a minimum of six feet. They're saying that you can't require anything greater than four feet in height. And, and we had differentiated major trees and evergreens and minor trees, but if nothing can be required to be over four feet, to me, they're all the same. So we just clarified that. We did have a, we left the requirement for shrubs, because the state was silent on that, so we left it as three gallon container stock at least twenty-four inches in height at installation. So we don't have a whole lot of choice here, we're basically meeting what the state says that we can require. As I mentioned just a minute ago, the state says we can't require a berm. So previously, we had said the screening should be at least twelve feet, which could be achieved by a berm or vegetation. We are basically limited, we, we're not allowed to require a berm and we're limited to four feet in height, so we're basically just striking that. And then the state does allow us to say, "Full screening or buffering achieved within five years of planting." So if you're looking for a thirty-five-foot-wide buffer that is providing full screening, that has to grow up in five, five years. Okay, there's a lot of red here, and let me explain it, but, rather than necessarily read through it. So there's the question of, of, of surety, of, of bonding for the landscaping. And what the state is allowing for is that after five years, we do an inspection. If there's a ninety percent survival rate at five years, then we can release fifty percent of the bond. If there's not ninety percent, we can hold on to that bond for another two years. So at seven years, we do another inspection. If the, we then have to release fifty percent, but if you do not have ninety percent survival, we can hold on to that fifty percent until some sort of mitigation. We have, we'll have to work it out as far as an agreement, as far as survival rate and so on. So that's essentially what the whole paragraph says. And then the state also allows for that the buffer landscaping must be maintained with a ninety percent survival rate through the life of the, of the system. So that's, that's a good addition. Vegetative stabilization, that's basically the, the stabilization on the site. And so they had a provision in there that minimized grading, so we added that in. And then they also have a provision that excessive mowing and other unnecessary landscaping will be limited. The use of herbicide is not permitted except to control invasive species in compliance with Maryland Agriculture, Department of Agriculture's weed control program. So, again, good stuff that the state had that we added into our code. This section on vegetative stabilization is the exact same language as in the buffer. So it basically has the same guidance that we're gonna bond what you stabilize a site with, and we were, we inspect it after five years and seven years and so on. And it has to have a ninety percent survival rate, so that's the same. See, we're rocketing right through it now. There's a height requirement that can't be higher than fifteen feet. There is a provision that says unless it's used for agricultural purposes, so agrivoltaics, it could be higher. So essentially, what we just said is, we already had that fifteen-foot provision, we just said that a variance may be approved by the zoning administration when agricultural co-location or agrivoltaics are proposed. So that could address it. Decommissioning. It is unclear, and I've asked the question, it's unclear who holds the surety, the bond, for decommissioning? Is it the county, or is it the state Public Service Commission? And that, I still have not gotten a clear answer on that, because I've seen different, written different ways. I am perfectly fine with the, with the Public Service Commission holding that surety if they're going to enforce it and claim it. So I just have added in that either the county or the Public Service Commission can hold that bond. All right, that's it for solar. And we, and I'm being conscious of time, and I think we, in the next four minutes, we can address energy storage devices, believe it or not. So I've got the code in here for energy storage devices. Just adding in a definition, right? For discussion, and, and this is one that we may need to think about. We are talking as, about energy storage devices as front of the meter, right? As a principal permitted use. These energy storage devices can be used behind the meter, right? And actually, they're on solar facilities, but that, we're already preempted on that, so we can't really talk about solar facilities. So, but there's the potential that they could be an accessory use on a, another type of principal permitted use. But there, you're talking about probably as an accessory use for the solar, so your house. Do we want to put any language in here or try and, and address these storage devices when they're an accessory? I don't think they are, that we should delve into that, and they are, the language that I've seen in, in APA guidance and so on, is that they don't recommend it. But it, but, and I have not attempted to, but give that some thought. We are, I have focused on as a principal permitted use, not as an accessory. So we can talk about that at another time. Ralph, your distance requirements. So, and one of the things that I printed out for you, I only have subsections of this. The way our, our setbacks and a lot of our uses are, are phrased, is that we have the Section A, which defines that setbacks are two hundred feet from any, any lot in a residence district, any residential lot of less than three acres in the agriculture or conservation district, and then on adjoining lots of three acres or more, a minimum separation of at least three hundred feet. So there are a bunch of uses that have that Provision A. We then have a B, C, D, and E, which are multiples of those, those numbers. And I, I, there's a two-page document that I handed out that has all of them listed. And so this has all the different types of, of setbacks. What I put in here was the maximum, which is five times the distance requirement. So it would be a thousand feet from a, a residence district, or fifteen hundred feet from separation from a adjoining lot of three acres or more. I just picked the maximum, but as you look down through this list, perhaps the maximum is not appropriate, and so that's what I need some feedback from you all. So if you look at, for example, at D, the following usage will be no, subject to four times the distance requirement. You're looking at blast furnaces, cement lime, explosive manufacturing or storage, junk yards, and so on. Maybe that's appropriate. If you look at C, uh, let's see.
Three times.
Three, it's three times, and you're talking about commercial sawmills, concrete and ceramic productions manufacturing, concrete or asphalt recycling, and so on. I have no idea what an appropriate setback would be. And so we can, we can make it fit and to, to one of these categories. Like I said, I started with E, which currently only has airports and rubble fills as having that, that setback. If we wanna push these as far as possible, then that would be my recommendation, if you think it's more appropriate, that maybe we would get some pushback from the state. We can delve into all of the, the theories, but we'll be looking for some, some feedback from you all as to what an appropriate setback would be. And we can, we can have that discussion, because we're running short on time at the next meeting.
Yeah, I, I don't know. I mean, I, I don't know, I'm not, I don't know enough about these, uh, storage units.
I think you need a pretty good setback, just because of the fact that there have been many of them burned up already.
Say fire.
And then, you know, once again, it's one of those things, how do you put it out?
Exactly.
It tends to be a big fire.
Is it like a power line? Do they emit anything? I, I don't, I have no clue.
I don't know. What I can tell you is that Mako is, is definitely in, looking into this. They're looking into the fire safety aspect of this. And it would not surprise me if next spring, that the state has another legislative bill that sets these for us. So it may not matter what we set it, but over the next year, if anybody proposes it, then we would have something, we would have a dimension.
Here's, here's what I'd like to know, Chris.
Yes.
It says, in, in the, where, it says, "Energy storage device shall conform with the most current version of National Fire Protection Association Standard 855." What is that?
Yes, so-
Does standard eight fifty-five talk about setbacks?
No, it does not.
I would certainly think that I would want the maximum setback from any residence, any residential areas, anything that has a concentration of people. So as we go down this other list, and I see the maximum setback is not where maximum amount of people are, it's other things.
Yeah.
Like a slaughterhouse.
Right.
If it's, if it blows, you know, the slaughterhouse is not gonna have that many people in it.
Yeah.
No matter what, I mean, anyway, it does. I don't, I don't know what the standards are. So how can we make an assessment on this? I mean, I'd like to know, there is a danger to this, this, these things, and the bigger they are, the more danger that there, that there could be.
Yes, and-
Yeah, it's one thing we, we say we hate solar panels, but these things here have real issues.
They do have issues, huge issues.
Yeah. So I'm, I'm just about done, I apologize, I'm running a little bit long, but I'll touch on the last couple of things real quick, and again, we'll take this conversation up again, next meeting. The state does not address fire protection, and like I said, though, Mako is currently doing a, a deep dive into this, and will probably have recommendations or legislation next session. However, APA guidance did recommend that, that codes have these provisions, the C1 and C2, and I ran these past our Department of Fire and EMS, and they agreed that these are appropriate to, to put in place. Now, what exactly, all the standards from NFPA Standard 855? I think you have to pay to download that and so on, but our Fire and EMS folks said that this is the appropriate reference. The other thing I put in there is that any required specialized training or equipment will be provided to the department by the applicant. So if you're building one of these and you need special equipment to fight any sort of emergency there, we're putting in our code that the applicant is responsible for providing that to the county. So our Fire, Department of Fire EMS supported that as well. The remainder of the, the slides are the requirements that I'm recommending for these energy storage devices. They are all the same essentially as for solar. So if we had it for solar, I put the same things here. And, and if the state was silent, I just kept it similar. There are some very minor differences. For example, the state is silent on the height of fences. When I read APA, they recommended seven feet high fences, so that's what I put in here. In solar, it's recommended a six, so there are those minor differences.
It seems like in, in a case like this with these solar storage facilities, there should be a requirement for some security.
Yeah.
Devices.
I agree.
Cameras or security devices, something other than a seven-foot-high fence. That doesn't seem like a lot of security around something that's just vulnerable to a problem.
Yeah.
Than that. I, I would love to see a security element in this thing.
Yeah, we can, I'm, I'm not aware of any other use that, that we require that for, but we could certainly do, and do a search to see if there are other jurisdictions that have security requirements and see what kind of language they have and-
A lot of businesses that have security, Chris, are, are businesses where, where people congregate and things like this. These, these things are out there in the middle of nowhere, vulnerable to many, many things that are maybe coming down. I mean, I don't wanna sound like a doomsday guy, but I just think that there should be some sort of a maximum security element of some sort into this. I'm not talking about guards around it every day, but some sort of a-
Well, I mean, and the other thing I've, is it can help the owner of this. So, I mean, it's not solar, but the energy storage facility. If there's a problem, they'll know it a lot quicker, 'cause I, I know a guy that works for a company that the only thing he does is works in like scrapyards and recycling centers, and they have cameras and infrared and everything else, just in case a fire may start, they can hopefully get it out before it gets out of hand.
Yeah.
See, that's why I'd like to, to sort of just see what's in that Fire EMS code. Certainly, you would consider the-
Yeah, I'll see if I can get a copy of that.
Real consideration in this.
I mean, consider it on the, on the security side. I guess one thing to, to remember is, we're talking about zoning regulations, so if we require it, then we require it of everybody that's doing this. It may be a best practice from the industry that they may do it already for their own purposes, but the question is whether we want to require it or not. But we can certainly look into whether other jurisdictions have made those types of requirements. But we can certainly look into whether other jurisdictions have made those types of requirements. All right, and that is done. Oh, I'm sorry, decommissioning, the state did not speak to decommissioning, but APA recommended that you have a decommissioning section, so this is the same as solar, so I added in for-
Good.
That's it. So, we will be back next meeting, um, to answer any questions that you have. A couple of things that you've asked, um, questions on, we'll, we'll, uh, try and get that research done and, and have more information for you all, but, um, the intent next meeting is to, to answer your questions, and if we're close enough, then maybe we can push it to the Board of County Commissioners for further discussion.
I sure give you a lot of credit for all the work you put into this.
A lot of work.
That is amount of work.
It's involved, yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job.
Any, uh, public comment?
Thank you.
We're, we are adjourned, thank you.
All right, thank you.